Good evening and welcome to the Wakefield School Committee meeting of Tuesday, January 14th of 2020. I'd like to call the meeting to order and start as we always do with the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our mission statement is that the vision of the Wakefield Public Schools is to graduate students who are confident lifelong learners, who are respectful and caring members of their community. Our mission is to prepare students for college, career, and community by providing rich and challenging curriculum, high-quality instruction, and educational experiences to meet their individual needs and interests. Tonight, we, with the school committee, would like to start the meeting with a public statement in regards to our negotiations with Unit A of the WEA. Mr. Markham?
Thank you, Mr. Markham, and good evening all, everyone, and happy new year. I'd like to read a statement on the status of the Wakefield teacher contract discussions by the, with the Labor Relations Subcommittee for the Wakefield School Committee. Excuse me, the teachers of the Wakefield Public Schools are employed under a collective bargaining agreement or contract negotiated, excuse me, negotiated every three years by the school committee and the teachers' union, Unit A of Wakefield Education Association and affiliate of the Massachusetts Teachers Association. Although the current teachers' contract expired on August 31, 2019, with regard to the 2019-20 school year, the terms and conditions, including work calendar and schedules, employee rights, grievance procedures, and the teacher's salary schedule remain in effect until a new contract is put in place. The negotiations teams of the school committee's Labor Relations Subcommittee and the superintendent, and the elected leaders of the teachers' union have been meeting since last winter in an attempt to appreciate and improve the teaching and learning environments of the Wakefield Public Schools, which of course includes fair and deserved wage increases. Please know that the teachers are being paid for their work this school year and paid at a higher base wage than last year. Teachers, like all union high school employers, are paid off a salary schedule that has built-in salary increases each year based on years of service and postgraduate educational standing. The increment on this schedule increases teacher's salary schedules, salaries, depending on years of service and education level, is between two and five percent a year. Unresolved, of course, in terms of wages, is how much of a raise would be granted due to cost-of-living adjustments and any other adjustments to the overall scale itself, such as base salary market adjustments that are important to keep Wakefield Public Schools competitive to other, like comparable or proximate, school districts. That is a very important part of our conversations. These contract negotiations have been respectful and professional in nature, with an eye on jointly improving teaching and learning conditions in the schools and developing a fair salary and compensation package. While some of the negotiation sessions have been productive, honestly, some have not. After not reaching an agreement before the end of last school year, our two teams decided to take a summer break and resume talks in earnest in the fall. That occurred, and the two negotiations teams have been meeting regularly throughout the fall and winter. In between those sessions with union officials, excuse me, school committee members on the Labor Relations Subcommittee and the school administration meet in strategy and bargaining preparation sessions. The teachers' union representatives meet in similar strategy and bargaining sessions among themselves. The full group of both teams, having met regularly since mid-September or so, continue to share ideas, concerns about student achievement, teacher expectations, fair wages, benefits, working conditions, including salary increases, and have tentatively agreed on several items. We've had a busy schedule of negotiations during the past few weeks and months and had planned on an all-day session for Saturday, January 4th. Unfortunately, due to a scheduling glitch, that we were unable to meet on that Saturday, but have scheduled new sessions in the coming days and weeks in a joint and genuine effort to agree on terms, conditions, and wages that are fair, appropriate, and suitable to the outstanding teaching faculty of the Wakefield Public Schools. Our talks will reserve, will resume in a concerted focus on completing an agreement within the next several weeks. There is nothing more fundamental to free speech than for Americans to gather on public ground, hold a sign or two, share a message of common or individual interest in a peaceful and engaging manner. The school committee and the administration recognize the teacher's right to free speech and understand and share frustration with the pace of the negotiation process and appreciate the work that is done. None of the teacher protests have interfered with the safe and timely arrival of students, the flow of traffic patterns for parents or other employees arriving to work, and we thank the teachers for this well-formed and appropriate protest. While some of our negotiations have been slow, some have been enlightening and informative in helping, I hope, both teams to appreciate the concerns and ideas being brought forward in a, in a common interest way. We have more work to do, but the school committee and the administration remain committed to a fair and appropriate wage increase in teaching and working conditions that best support students first in their classroom and teachers in their workplace. We look forward to resuming our contract talks in the next week and concluding our collective bargaining discussions and contract itself within the next month or so. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Markham. Moving on, I think I might like to take Student Advisory Council out of order. They are with the committee, so Mr. Loudon isn't stuck.
Hi, everyone, happy new year. So, schools, like, in the, in the flow of things, everything's kind of regular by now, and there's, like, a lot going on, everyone's, like, in their activities for the winter and, like, figuring out things they like, things they don't like. Pretty soon, next week, about a week, is the start of mid-years, which is a pretty, like, stressful week. It's really long, it's, like, really mentally draining. And then, right after that, like, we pick classes, and that's kind of something that I think is really hard, like, picking classes for what you want to do, like, trying to figure out what you want to do without, like, any guidance. Like, I know for the incoming freshmen that there's the academic pride night that, like, shows them what each class is like, but for people going to be, like, sophomores or even juniors or seniors, like, even me next year, I don't exactly know what each class entails, and I'm not, like, sure how to pick without really help. So, I know that there's, like, word of mouth from other people, like, what they think of the class and, like, other things like that, but if there was a more, like, organized setting about classes for people, not just freshmen, people to be sophomores or to be juniors, because it's really hard to pick and, like, I don't know. I feel like there should be more, like, awareness about the different class schedules that can be offered, because people can miss out and, like, I don't know, I just think that's important.
Great, appreciate that input. Give us hands.
Can I? Do you guys, like, meet with your guidance counselor at all to talk about what you might be considering?
So, it's a little different, like, now, but I know that when I was going to be, like, a sophomore or going to be a junior, the teachers just put in recommendations for classes, and, like, there were required classes to take, like, a math, a science, and English, but now there's more flexibility. Next year, I'm going to be a senior, but, so you do meet with your guidance counselor, but you don't really, like, know everything, like, you got the list of classes in a, like, pamphlet, and you don't get anything more than that. There's no explanation, you might want to, like, you might try to ask people and, like, seek out information about it, but there's not really, like, a lot, and I'm sure you can plan your schedule around, like, what you might be interested in, like, in the later years of high school, but it's really hard to know what, like, the difficulties are and the responsibilities and everything like that.
Yeah, so you're, so this is really stressful for you because you're going into your senior year and you have so much choice.
So many options, yeah.
And you aren't sure what direction to go. Because you have that much choice, and maybe you don't feel like you have enough information to make an informed choice.
Yeah.
What would you suggest? I'm just wondering if you've thought of any way that might be kind of helpful to you and other folks in your situation.
I feel like the academic pride night did help, like, when I went to be a freshman, that really helped, and, like, for other people just to know, like, what, what options there are, like, what you can do. There are so many different classes, but you only, like, get steered in the direction just because of, like, requirements.
Right, yeah, so if there were, like, maybe even a brief presentation that sort of outlined the offerings for the current juniors for next, you know, their senior year, you, there might be one way to get some information out to you. Yeah, that's really good to know.
Yeah.
Is it, is it more helpful to hear from peers, fellow students, than it is from adults?
Yeah, I think it's just hard for students to, like, organize it with everyone being so busy and, like, finding time for it.
But we could probably make time, right?
Yeah.
But they do that at pride night, right? Aren't the students available, like, the parents go in and they, you know, have their time with the curriculum heads, and the students then go in the cafeteria, and they're able to talk to the students who are taking the classes at the time?
Yeah.
So, something sort of set up similar to that?
Yeah, not sure exactly how it would work, but something for each grade to learn what lies next.
Is there an opportunity for you to, if you were considering a particular course, is there an opportunity for you to maybe go make an appointment with the teacher who's currently teaching it and go sit down and say, what would be expected of me?
You could probably go in and ask, but, like, that's from the teacher's perspective, which is different.
Aren't they the ones that could tell you best what was expected of you?
Yeah, yeah, but, like, whether, yeah, that's a good idea, too.
Well, maybe like a mix, right?
Yeah. Too big a, like, if every student needed to do that, it might be overwhelming. But I was curious if that, if you had one or two courses you were thinking about, and, you know, it might be worthwhile, though, to make that appointment.
Like, I don't really know, so I haven't really gone, and then it just comes up really, really abruptly after mid-term's week, so I, like, I don't really know if I would ever find time to go and talk to a teacher about something they're teaching. And also, sometimes the classes that teachers teach change, so.
Yes.
That's a good point.
So, it's hard to, like, get exactly what someone does, the way they might do, like, notes or something might differ from a different teacher.
Right.
I have just a, yeah, so the, the school I work at has, like, the curriculum coordinators will do a brief presentation for each grade, say, here are your options, and they don't go into a lot of detail for each class, but they give some information, and then maybe we can incorporate something like that with some, some, some student feedback.
I think that's good, too, and, like, just letting people know, like, if they have any questions, just ask the teacher, too, like you were saying.
Yeah, or, or they can ask their guidance counselor, maybe they can have a little bit more time with their counselor to, to really figure out, especially, you know, when you have so many options, like, when you're going freshman to sophomore year, not so much, but junior to senior year, that's kind of a big deal.
Colin, you have a question?
Yeah, I was just going to ask, so we just looked at a program of studies at our last school committee meeting, and I just wondered if you feel like the students, if that's one of the things that is a go-to for them. You said they're listed, but, you know, there's a, there's a good description, you know, maybe like three to four-sentence description in the program of studies, so that if you had, you know, you're interested in ABC, you know, then we can go over here and just get a little bit more detail, and then maybe that will make your choice of what teacher to talk to or what students to talk to, but certainly making that more accessible to the students. I mean, it's, it's on the website, but just making the students more aware of that particular document. I feel like it gives, it gives you a little guidance and a little understanding of the.
I've never seen the sentences before.
No, so you're just seeing a list.
Yeah, it's just the class, the credit, and, like, the level, and that's it. You just kind of guess.
There's a book.
Okay, the good news is I think we can help.
Right.
Yeah, just keep us posted, too, on, you know, the timing, come back and let us know.
Next meeting, maybe, how you made out, because by time our next meeting, then you'll be done.
Yeah, and, and can I just share, I really appreciate that you brought this forward to us, because I, I feel like that's really where the value of having our students be part of the school committee. So, I really enjoy hearing a lot about the different activities and, and the, and the things that are going on, but when there's an actual issue like this, I'm really grateful that you were able to bring that up, so thank you, very helpful.
Do you have anything else? Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and we'll move on to our, our public comment session. Anybody from the public that wishes to speak on any matter that is on tonight's agenda or not is welcome to come to the other table. Please bear in mind that the, the rules are that the committee does not engage in dialogue, and you are limited to three minutes, and just state your name and address.
Sure, thank you, folks, Chris Small, 21 Morrison Avenue, Wakefield. If I can get the prepared statement up. Good evening, my name is Chris Small, I'm here on behalf of the Walton School PTO. Like many other parents here tonight, I'd like to express my concern over the length of time it is taking to reach a resolution in the contract negotiation process. Instead of pointing fingers, I'd like to assume the best of everyone on both sides and that they are working in good faith towards a solution that is fair to teachers, reasonable to the school committee, and creates a solid learning environment for our children. We are hoping for a contract that takes into account and acknowledges the daily efforts that we see from our teachers, the hours before and after school to give extra help, plan lessons, purchase supplies, correct papers, and answer emails, being available for meetings at any given time, teaching lessons under an increasingly restrictive test-based formula that leaves less room for creativity, and standing outside to help students out of their cards in any kinds of weather. We see and are so appreciative of everything that they do. We also understand that the role of a school committee member is far less visible, and so we thank you for the often unseen efforts that you put in to help our schools and our students continue to thrive. Because both sides are united in their dedication to our students, we hope that they will keep that dedication in mind to push them toward a resolution that can be reached sooner than later and that both sides can be proud of. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else that wishes to speak? Okay, and we shall move on. Consent agenda, please.
Move that the school committee approve the minutes of the December 10th, 2019, school committee meeting and accept the minutes of the December 10th, 2019, school committee policy and communications subcommittee as presented.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any comments, corrections on those minutes? Seeing none of those in favor, that would be unanimous. And budget items, Mr. Fagner.
Good evening, so tonight you have the financial statements in front of you through December 31st, 2019. It shows we're probably, we're pretty much in line with where, where we were last year at this time. One line that seems to be trending a little higher than last year is the substitute line, so we'll just keep an eye on that as the year goes. Our grants were spending down, and the revolving accounts look in good shape. Anyone has any questions about that?
As far as the substitute line is concerned, is the driver, are we just experiencing more sickness? Or has it been more meetings, we've needed subs for people to cover for, or what's driving that, do you think?
All of the above, maternity leaves, leaves of absence, family medical leaves.
You've got some extra maternity, so. And the.
The next item is the payrolls for December.
Move that the school committee approve payroll warrants number 24 and number 26 as presented.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, all those in favor, that would be unanimous.
We don't have any gifts this evening, but we do have in front of you the computer financing for the technology for, this was budgeted in this budget for this year. It's the start of the three-year lease for the computers, but it's just to go forward to finance the computers, the Chromebooks for all the schools.
Which line item is that on?
Should be in the technology line.
Like instructional supplies, maybe?
Right, it's part of instructional supplies.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have a motion?
Yes, move that the school committee approve the technology lease as presented.
Second.
Part of discussion, I think everybody received a copy of Attorney Mullins' input, and, but nothing seems really different than we've had in the past. And the Chromebooks that are rolling off, for lack of a better word, are they being, like, repurposed or kept for parts? Or both?
Yes, and part of this lease is we, we purchased some additional ones to keep as spares, just in case of breakage or anything like that.
Existing carts are okay, because I just put the new ones in the same carts?
So, this isn't financing carts, this is just financing Chromebooks, but we did purchase some additional carts.
Okay. And we're going to need, and there's, as part of our budget, we're going to need additional carts beyond the ones that have already been purchased, starting in September. So, we're trying to cycle equipment out and cycle equipment in, so.
Is the goal there to have more carts available, so that this is more availability?
And so, some of our carts are just getting worn out, they just, you know, in regard to the chargers on them, they don't, the connections just, you know, they're plugged in and unplugged, you know, six, seven times a day. And so, some of the connections need to be refastened, and some of the chargers need to be replaced, and, and some of the Chromebooks aren't holding chargers any longer. So, we'll, you know, at the end of the year, we'll take an inventory of everything that we have, we will repair what we can, repurpose what we can. One of the units, Unit C, our parent educators, will be, has, we've made some Chromebooks available for their use, and we've also made them available for, for our student use as well. But we're kind of have a, a kind of a faceted approach to trying to get as many machines and as many hands and working as, as long as we can kind of keep them running.
I, I just think that it's a, probably, you know, all the things you're mentioning are probably a good demonstration of why we needed this three-year cycle and planned obsolescence. And we didn't have it at one point in time, so this is, it seems like we're planning better.
Yeah.
Any comments, questions, yes, Tom?
How many, how many devices are we talking about?
This is about a thousand Chromebooks.
And just in broad strokes, where are we, where are they likely to be replenished?
The majority go to the Galvin, of course, and then the high school, pretty much every school is receiving. I can get your more detailed breakdown, but then again, there's about 20 that we just keep here at Central Office in case of breakage or anything, or spares.
And just so you know, my, my principal interest is letting the community hear, one, that, that there's a thousand that we're talking about is a, almost a district-wide refresh, which is what is involved, right? And obviously, the thousand will be coming out of cycle, and these new devices will be put in cycle. This is, this is what, the third year of a, I mean, the third term of a, of a, of a refresh in this, in this regard. So, that's, that's monumental, you know, progress that we've continued to make, and I think that, that really goes, that really goes a long way. When do we think the students and teachers might be able to see the new devices? Are we talking about next September, or are we talking about sooner than that?
This is this fiscal year.
Right, so when, we, we got to go through the execution of the contract and all that, and, but it's not like a June thing, it's maybe a March thing?
So, we start at the beginning of the year, so this is the financing of it, so we have the purchase order in order to, to pay for the devices.
Okay, great, thank you.
I guess I still include, when are the devices expected to arrive?
The majority have already been ordered.
Already, already been ordered, okay, so within the next couple of months?
Yeah.
And how long does it take to image them?
It, it takes a while to image a thousand machines, right? And so, you know, I can, we can have more information in, in terms of when they'll be kind of put into use, right? But one of the things that's important to note, you know, in, in the last, our last budget, you know, one of the things that we were, were able to kind of put into the budget was an additional technician, right? So, we have a staff of three that are managing about 3,500 machines, right? And so, we have 3,500-plus students, we have 570 employees. Not all 570 will have access to machines, but 430 will or need to on a, on a rotating basis. So, there's a lot of moving parts, there's a lot of moving parts, and there's, you know, Adam, Colin, Tony, and the teacher leaders at Galvin this year created a, a new kind of device plan to kind of minimize the amount of breakage, and that has been successful, which has allowed us to repurpose machines and get them into the hands of adults in other places and other parts of the building. We're also getting them into, you know, younger and younger grades at elementary. So, we're, so it's a pretty robust plan with a lot of moving parts. And, and so, and the, and the teachers, to be honest, have been pretty flexible, you know, in, in kind of not only how they use devices, but how they're accessing them and how they're managing them as well. Because it's, it can, it's a lot, right? So.
So, I don't disagree with that at all, in fact, I, I fully appreciate the, one of the things that I, the reason why I'm sort of peppering some of these isn't because we should be sitting here just pro-form approving a lease. This is a real opportunity to talk about the type of district resources that have been advocated by the school committee and predecessor school committees for a long time about putting these type of resources in the hands of students and the hands of teachers. So, this should be a, while we should approve the lease, and I hope we do, I'm sure we will, this should be a time to be able to speak about, you know, some, some new, some new devices, new technology coming exactly for the types of reasons why we're all sitting around this table, bringing better resources to kids. So, I think this is a little, a celebration, not just a pro-form approval of a lease, and I encourage, so I fully recognize that the IT guys and women are busy, it takes a while, I get all that, but this should be a time that people are now going to start asking, when are we going to see them? When are the kids going to have them available to them? So, I'm, I'm sure they will get in the hands of students and teachers as soon as, as soon as humanly possible, but, but this is, this is good news, thank you.
So, motions been made and seconded, any further questions, discussion, all those in favor? That would be unanimous. I wasn't, I wasn't sure where you were going with that. Okay, would that be everything?
Just some signatures, sorry.
Okay, so we will sign, sign our lives away before we leave. Chairman's comments, we have had, as you're all well aware, we, we were gratefully accepted or invited into the, the MSBA eligibility period for, to look at the Wake Memorial High School. You know, it has, it's yet to be determined exactly what that project's scope will be, but one of the things that we are required to have is an MSBA advisory council. Mr. Markham had worked at organizing a, a, a group earlier in the year. Mr. Markham had worked at organizing a, a group earlier in the year. We don't wish to upset that, that, that group. You know, everybody that was invited into that group is certainly a valued member and their opinions matter and we, we want their participation. We've reviewed the requirements of the MSBA and they seem to pretty much align with us, with what we already had lined up. The only other, we do need to add MCPPO certified person, which I know there were a couple of people in that pipeline. Has anybody been granted that certification yet?
Well, we have two members of the executive team that, that are working on it. But we also, on the town side, I spoke to Mr. Mayo this morning and we have someone on the town side who's MCPPO certified.
Great. So, you know, I guess at this point, then, Mr. Markham, if you could put out...
Yeah, if I may, Mr. Chairman, thank you. So one of the things that came up since the, the great news after our, well, prior, just prior to our last meeting about MSBA was about, you know, beginning to schedule the working group meeting. In, in that, in that preparation, we started talking about the purpose as established by this committee at a August and September meeting. And then that purpose, obviously, in many ways, which is a good thing, had fallen to the wayside. So how do we make best use of that? It's almost like things came together without, without really us honestly planning for them to come together that way. But with the type of representation around the table within the working group is very, very close, if not exactly mirroring the type of representation that MSBA expects for the advisory group. Those of us that have been around may remember, obviously, a similar group was formed at the time of, right this time, when the Galvin was being, was being discussed. So in talking with town officials and, and Chris and Doug and others, it seemed to have made sense to try to merge these two groups together and then set off on a much more prescriptive agenda than sort of, than sort of one that we had sort of envisioned back in the fall. We now actually have a plan and a need and have an outline that the MSBA seeks for community input. So what I would, I think what Chris is prompting me to do, and I just took a minute to sort of give a two-second backdrop, would be to make a motion, I'd like to make a motion to merge what we know as the high school, our working group, and invite all of the attendees and participants to serve on the MSBA Wakefield Memorial High School Advisory Committee.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second.
So the, the purposes that we, we appreciate, you know, every, the input we've, and the willingness to serve that we've received, we are trying to move forward within the guidelines that the MSBA has outlined. And, you know, Mr. Shroly will have a presentation in a little while to, to further clarify a lot of that. But I think, I think we need to, you know, get this group organized and get on, on a meeting schedule as soon as possible, so. It's the right move. We'll be seeking to...
MSBA expects us to form such an advisory committee. We would go through the same steps, pretty much. We would seek the same type of stakeholders around town, both around the school district and around the community at large, to sit on advisory committee. And frankly, since that work has already been done, folks have stepped forward and some have been recruited by the nature of their position. But nonetheless, such a group really already exists and now let's make best use of that and give them a much more prescriptive agenda than, than would have been the potential for, you know, a little more, more talking and less planning.
In our original group, we had, we had really set, you know, very tight parameters, what we could and couldn't do. This renamed group will be working under the parameters set forth by the MSBA.
Right. So I'd like to take advantage of a existing resource and be that much step ahead.
And just another thing to point out for the public, you know, the permanent building committee, as far as any construction is concerned, is the one that is the lead for this, this, this project. However, the advisory committee is, is set to, you know, set forth, you know, what is it that we need? You know, it, it's a larger group with more, more input to review the, you know, what, what, what should we have in this newly-formed school? We need to have X and Y and Z and, you know, the amount of space that those are going to take to, to determine the scope of the project itself. So it's a, it's a, that group will also meet with the educational subgroups that the MSBA, and the architects and all those people will meet with throughout the schools, as we did with the Galvin. This is a beginning of a long journey, but it's, I'm happy to be on it. So. Any other questions about the, the working group? Okay, so motion's been made and seconded, so all those in favor? Okay, great. Finance and Facilities is meeting this Friday morning and then on February seventh at the superintendent's conference room. And then just a reminder that, you know, the upcoming elections for the spring, you know, that there are seats that are, many seats throughout the town that are, are up for reelection and some vacancies or whatnot, so I encourage anybody from the public that has had an interest in, in participating in town government, that now is the time to step forward. I am done.
Great.
Mr. Lyons?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to give just a very quick budget update. So starting in October, Assistant Superintendent Cara Morrow, myself and Christine Befagnar, our school business administrator, got together and we created a schedule where I went around in the morning and in the afternoon and, and had coffee information sessions with all of our teachers that were able to attend. And I think it's, it's a great opportunity to go to each individual school and to hear teacher perspectives and, and Para perspectives and really any faculty or staff member. It's open to, to all that, that has the time and the availability to kind of, to get in and, and just have a conversation. At all of the schools, the meetings were well-attended on the teacher's side. And it's an opportunity, it's an unstructured conversation for them to talk about their work, to talk about resources, what they feel like they need. During these, during these meetings, we try to really listen closely and draft and kind of take good notes. And so what we do with those notes is we compile all of them into a document and we start to look at what individual schools are reporting that they need. We also look at trends or commonalities between schools. And so I, I'll be reporting tomorrow night at the State of the Schools address, which is at six-thirty at, at Galvin Middle School. But during that address, I will talk a little bit more, not only about the budget process and the update, but about the emerging needs that, that came from that conversation or those conversations with teachers. In addition to the conversations that we've had with teachers, we've had a few parent coffees and we've had to reschedule one just before the December break due to snow. And so we're, we're trying to get those back, those meetings back on the calendar now. And we'll also do a follow-up with staff that are able to attend once we compile all this information. So as part of this process in December, earlier this year than we've done in years past, we're trying to, to get things done on a little bit, we're trying to schedule, you know, a few weeks ahead of where we were last year. But this year, right before break in December, all of the principals and all of the directors presented their budgets to executive team members and myself. And as part of this process, each principal is given kind of their budgets from scratch. For example, they're giving, given a list of all of their faculty members, all of their faculty and staff. They're given a list of the number of students that they have. And as part of that process, we ask them to really take a hard look at the resources that they currently have. There's, there are some guiding questions and prompts that, that are created from us at Central Office, which really require administrators to, to think about the possibility of reconstituting positions or reallocating resources before we would make a proposal to add new resources or new positions. And, and I would say at this point, our administrators are pretty efficient and, and I would say expert, most of them, at really being discreet about what resources they have available, how they can share resources with other schools, and also really trying to advocate for what they need at their individual schools. So between what teachers report and what the directors and principals report, Christine and I compile all of this information and we put it in a spreadsheet and we, we try to cost out what it would take to fund all of the asks, if you will. And so, and then that kind of creates a prompt for us to really think about, how do we prioritize? You know, how do we really look at what is most essential? You know, while also looking at drivers of cost within the budget. When we look at programs that, that need to be supported equitably or due to student needs differently than others. We try to look at positions. We did this last year and I think we were, I would argue, very successful at bringing a considerable amount of more direct support into classrooms last year than we had in the prior three-year, three years of budgets that I, I had been a part of. So I think this year, I think the hope is to continue to do that and do it in a more timely manner and try to do it in a more efficient manner. And so we're also, as part of the State of the Schools address, that is usually a prompt for us where we send out a survey to parents and to faculty to give feedback. We tried to use multiple modes of, of kind of feedback to, to really look at, you know, what are people saying that they need? So we'll be surveying parents and teachers. Again, we'll be compiling this information and we'll go back and we'll prioritize from there. The Student Services Subcommittee has already sent out surveys that have really focused on transition grades, on grades five and on grades nine. And parents and students and teachers have participated in those surveys and those act as a data point for us as well. So that's kind of what we're doing with the budget. There are a lot of moving parts. And, and I'll share more of this tomorrow night at, at the State of the Schools address and budget update. And so at this point in time, I would like to invite Bob Shroly up to the table. Bob is our facilities director and Bob is going to talk a little bit about our acceptance into the MSBA grant and when we start and what the beginnings of that work look like.
Thank you, Doug.
Appreciate it.
As Doug and Mr. Chairman mentioned earlier, for those at home and those of you who, who know already, we've been accepted from the MSBA to join in the, the grant for our new high school. I'm gonna kind of go through the process. It's probably very similar to ones that you may or may not have been through with the Galvin, but I'm gonna go through the process that when we met with MSBA in December, they laid out the guidelines with what we're going to, going to do. So there's eight modules that we have to go through, the steps to build a, build a new school or renovate. And the first step is the eligibility period. We have two-hundred-and-seventy days. Thank you. Thank you. We have two-hundred-and-seventy days to complete these, the, the first module and we are eligible to start on April first. We cannot start any earlier to do any of these steps just because the MSBA has a pretty extensive pipeline of projects they're doing throughout the state. So with that, we'll start with, so the overview of Module One. April first is when we can start and we have to have everything submitted and completed by December twenty-eighth of this year. As you can see, the MS, the eligibility period assists the MSBA with managing its financial resources by identifying early in the process whether a district is ready to manage and fund a capital project. So the MSBA works with us to help us ensure that the community, the district and the town are ready and available to fund and, and build or renovate a new high school. So the deliverables are on the left and these are what we have to hit within the two-hundred-and-seventy days. There's a day, days column and naturally that's, we have to hit each of these deliverables within this timeline. The due date is, is from April first. And the MSBA, I put the MSBA board meeting dates down there because if we hit these dates earlier, we, we are eligible and can submit earlier to the MSBA. I did speak with a coordinator that was, was assigned to us for this project and he said, if we get the vote, the local vote, I'll go through all these line item by line item. If we get the local vote in earlier, we can submit to the Board of Directors for an earlier meeting. So the initial compliance certification. This is just a certification that we need to sign to acknowledge the MSBA that we understand the grant program guidelines. The school building committee, similar to what Mr. Markham just discussed about the advisory committee. The MSBA mandates certain levels, whether it's a MCPPO certified administrator of the town, superintendent. There's a list of, of people that need to be on this committee that MSBA mandates. The educational profile questionnaire and online enrollment projection. Again, this, these are kind of straightforward. It's to help the MSBA understand, further understand what the current's, the district's current and proposed educational facilities, teaching methodology, grade configurations and program offerings are. And related to those, enrollment certification. This is anything else a district believes will affect enrollment, whether it's upcoming housing developments. I know we have a lot of those going on in, in, in town. So we'll have to take all those into effect to see what is our projected enrollment going to look like for our new school. The maintenance and capital planning information, this was already completed when we submitted our SLI, so there's already one, one box checked off for us. And then the, the, the two big ones really is the local vote authorization. So the local vote authorization will be a town vote that we have to put out for funds for a feasibility study. So there's two major votes and I'll get to the second one. Naturally, it's to fund the project. But the first one is the local vote to get buy-in from townspeople to move to Module Number Two, which would be a feasibility study. And a feasibility study agreement is just signing a, an agreement to continue to Module Number Two.
Bob, before you move on, do, do we have any idea of the cost of what will, what that vote will be trying to pass around a feasibility study? Is it two-hundred thousand, is it half a million, is it?
From, I, I don't want to throw a number out there.
Okay.
But from, from what other schools, similar to our size in the state in the last three years, I was actually looking earlier today, it looks between one and a half to two million dollars roughly.
Okay.
So it's not, yeah.
It was way out of the ballpark there.
Yeah. So it, it could be lower than that, it could be higher, right? It's, I don't, I don't want that number to be, be permanent, but that's...
So if I can add, Bob?
Yeah, okay. One of the things that has changed in, in Module One is the MSBA has created this, has kind of spaced this out to manage their resources, but also to gauge the proficiency and the, the town's ability to participate thoughtfully in the grant. So I think what used to be an amount that you could be able to hire an OPM, develop a, you know, a schematic design and do a feasibility study, cost X, it now costs more than that and, and really, MSBA wants to make sure that the town can allocate those funds to participate in the grant, right? And so, and, and again, this is all part of monies that will be reimbursable at the end. But this is, this phase is really critical to, to kind of set the stage and the pace, right? The other thing that I think is important to note is that in meeting with Mr. Mayo this morning in preparation for this meeting, I, I feel like we have a plan for every one of these lines. And I think what we want to do, and I think as Bob was saying, we want to be, you know, ahead of every due date and well-prepared. You know, we already have kind of our draft, we have drafts from other districts around educational profile questionnaires. educational profile questionnaires, you know, in terms of the first two, the School Building Committee and the Initial Compliance Certificate. Mr. Mayo is already collaborating with Mr. Markham on this. So I feel like we're not even, you know, we're not supposed to start technically until April 1st, but I think everyone is ready to go. But I'm sorry to cut you off, Bob.
No worries. One of the big things we want to look at too with the, before I move on, with the local vote, is we want to get this right. We don't want to undercut how much it's going to be, because if we do that, say, we put out $1 million and it gets approved, and when we hit the feasibility study, if it's a million and a half, the MSBA is only going to cover the 50% of the million, then we'd have to come up with the other 500,000 on the town side. So that's, we really want to get this right and don't want to undercut the projected So this is Modules 1 through 8. The blue columns are what we own as a district, and the green ones is more the construction side. So I'll read them real quick. We have the eligibility period, it's Module One. Forming the Project Team, Module Two. Feasibility Study. Schematic Design. Funding the Project. Detailed Design. Construction. And finally, Completing the Project. So Modules 1 through 3, we already discussed Module One. Module Two is Forming the Project Team. This is where we would select our OPM or owner's project manager, and the owner or project manager would then help us select an architect or a schematic design. Once these are selected, the OPM and designer would help us with the feasibility study. The feasibility study can take anywhere from 12 months to 18 months, and this is really an in-depth look at the options we have, whether it's building new or renovating. And MSBA mandates that you look, there's really three options, renovating and adding on, but we need to look at all three options, see what's best in the feasibility study, and then go from there, but there's an extensive and deep dive into this, which is why it takes so long. Module 4 through 6, once we decide out of these three options which one we want to go towards, then we will get a schematic design in accordance and collaboration with the MSBA. That's the designing of the project, where it's going to be, getting the proposed costs, scope, budget. Once the schematic design is approved by the MSBA and the town, we will need to go for funding of the project. So the Board of Directors at the MSBA will have to approve the funding that we are requesting since they're paying for half of it, or whatever our percentage may be. And then, the big thing we need to do is get the community authorization and support, which is the second vote that I spoke about earlier. If and when the vote is approved, we would move on to the detailed design, which would be the design development, construction, and then bidding out to subcontractors and subcontractors to build the project. And then Modules 7, 8 are kind of straightforward, construction, whether it's building from ground up, new construction or renovating, and then after that, the completion of the project. The completion of the project can take up six months to a year after the project is built, just to close out any things that are left open, paying the rest of the project, getting refunded from the MSBA, and whatnot.
Punch List.
So, we've received, since we've been accepted in the last month, some frequently asked questions, I thought I'd throw up here before I open it up to the floor. Since we've been accepted into the MSBA grant program, we'll be getting a new school. The simple answer is no, we still have two votes and a lot of work to do to get there. Where will the new school be located? Again, that's to be determined through the feasibility study. How long will this project take? We're hoping five to six years. We're really trying to move as fast as we can and get all of our ducks in a row. Might be a little aggressive, but. How much will this cost? Again, that's to be determined. As most of you know, Boston, the Boston area is really booming with new builds and construction, so not only are project managers, designers at a premium, but also tradespeople and contractors. How will this construction affect students? This is really dependent on whether we renovate or build new. I mean, as most of you know, renovation will, renovating would affect students because it would be noise and a disruption to the day-to-day versus building new, which is wherever that would be, across the street, or whatever the options may be. Will this affect our NIESC accreditation? We will have continued accreditation while on probation for facilities, so we will still be accredited. And will we collaborate in construction occurring at the Northeast Volk School? The answer is no, these are two separate projects. We are looking at possibly relocating the street so the intersection is less dangerous and it's, but that's still up in the air.
Which is one of the most exciting parts of the project. Just saying.
So any questions?
Good.
Do you mind?
You don't.
So to go back a slide, just in regard to the NIESC accreditation? So we often get this question about, so is the high school accredited? And the term that NIESC is currently using is, the Board at NIESC, the New England Association for Schools and Colleges, the vote is, and the language that they use is, Wakefield Public School, they voted to continue our accreditation, but we're on, and we're on probation because of our facility, okay, which is standard seven. There are a number of other standards that relate to curriculum, class size, so there's no other issue that's cited with NIESC other than standard seven, which is our facility. So the vote is, and the language that they're using is, Wakefield Memorial High School is the accreditation, the Board vote is to continue accreditation while on probation for facility, but this does not affect our ongoing work day-to-day. It does not affect, you know, we get questions sometimes about, will this affect my child's ability to apply to different colleges? And the answer is no, right? So when we face out to the world, they will see a school that is maintaining an accreditation and a good working relationship with NIESC, a positive working relationship, but we are on probation for facility. Just to be clear.
My question was, in the schematic design period, what would you say is the average or are there options presented? So not just one schematic design. I'm just kind of thinking back to like a Newton thing where you have the community or the taxpayers voting on sort of option A or B, which may be an increased price or, you know, different alternatives.
So I think that's where, it depends on what the town decides to do, but that's where the School Building Committee is really making, excuse me, making the decisions with the feasibility study. Here's our feasibility study, here are three options, what's the best option for Wakefield? And then, once an option is selected, then it goes out to vote with the cost in that option.
So that's already sort of been decided before you get to that schematic design process, and then coming towards the vote, you would really hope to be putting forth one option?
Correct.
Right, okay.
Correct me if I'm wrong, is that?
I mean, schematic design is a very expensive process, and they don't want to do three of them.
No, no, I understand, but I just was looking, thinking about what's happened in other towns where you sort of have, and it doesn't always end well, you know, so I was just trying to understand, you know, how many options, we were only given one option, you know, with a Galvin, so.
Right, but, you know, there were several options going into that.
Right.
But the Advisory Committee and the Permanent Building Committee, we can't forget that, you know, the construction is really run by them, they're the ones that will select the OPM and the architects. But the process is going to be, you know, for that group to decide what's the most reasonable thing to ask for.
Yeah, understood.
And that's why you have the wide group of people having their input on that. Good, we're excited. You have any?
Thank you, guys.
No, no, just to get that other little project off of our plate so we can move on, right?
Thank you, Bob. So I just have two other announcements. One is that our February 11th School Committee Meeting will be in Boston, and that will be at the Wesley United Methodist Church on 1076 Washington Street in Dorchester. So we're inviting the Director of Metco, Millie Abahay-Thomas. She said she's going to do everything she can to attend. If she has a conflict, that there'll be another representative there to be part of the meeting, and she looks forward to joining us if she can.
She's also coming to MLK, right?
She's also coming, and she's the keynote at the MLK date on Monday, the 20th. So, just some other dates to let the community know, yes?
Real quick, what time should we be expected to be at that meeting? It'll start at 7:30, should we be there at 6:30?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So, just some other dates, just to let the community know. There is a special election this year, so on Tuesday, February 4th, I just want to double-check, make sure, I think it's February 4th and March 3rd. They're both Tuesdays. The first is a special election. For Representative Broder's seat has been vacated, so there'll be a special election for that position and others. And so, that is on the 3rd, that will be a regular school day. Voting will be held at Galvin Middle School. We'll be sending out an email tomorrow to the community letting parents know about that day and about voting. There'll also be a voting day the first Tuesday in March, which will be a professional development day, so there'll be no school for students on that day, and we'll move professional development for our faculty and staff to other locations or other schools in the district, just to keep everyone abreast of just some commitments.
And just a reminder that election is, it doesn't even involve the entire town. It's only precincts four, five, and six, I believe, right? So I don't, it's not like a presidential election where you have crowds and crowds of people, I don't think, I think it'll be a relatively minimal impact.
The one in February.
Yeah.
And that's it for me, Mr. Chairman.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Subcommittee reports. Financing Facilities, we already talked about, we're meeting this Friday morning at 7:30. We should be getting some, we're getting to a point with harder numbers, I think, so it's, you know, I don't have the date in front of me for when our budget hearing will be, but it should be in February, right? And so, you know, the next month is going to be pretty active on budget. I think we've already covered labor, right?
We have, we will be asking at Item 14 for an executive session to bring the committee up to speed on some strategies from the Subcommittee.
And Student Services?
Student Services, there's nothing really to report. We are meeting next Tuesday, and our plan, like Doug said, the surveys have been sent out and the results are in, so that is probably what we're going to focus on, is looking at the data, and we'll keep you posted.
Great.
Thank you. And Policy Communications?
So we have a few policies to vote on tonight. At the last meeting, we put three policies on the table for consideration. The Policy 1010R, which is called the Life-Threatening Allergies in the School Setting Policy. Policy 104R, the Non-Discrimination and Harassment Policy, and then the Policy 100-R, the Bullying Prevention Policy. We've been at these for a while, we've had legal review them, we've reviewed them as a team. For the Life-Threatening Allergies, there were some minor modifications that were made to that to make that a more general policy that was not just focused on nuts, and so there are some language changes in there that were pretty minimal. And then, the Non-Discrimination and Harassment and Bullying, Non-Discrimination and Bullying went together, yes, used to go together, and so we've kind of pulled those apart and put Non-Discrimination and Harassment together, all of this at kind of legal's recommendation. And so, that, you guys have those in front of you, we'd like to vote, make a motion to vote to approve those tonight, and then they would be, they would be kind of entered into our policy book, it would be updated on the website, we're undergoing a big website change anyway, so it'll be updated kind of there. And then Doug's going to talk a little bit about kind of the rollout, but do we make the motion first? Yeah, okay. Amy, are you reading that, or do you want me to?
Yep, I am. Move that the School Committee approve Policy Number 1010-R, Life-Threatening Allergies in the School Setting as Presented.
Motion's made and seconded, discussion? Seeing none of those in favor? Okay, that was it.
Move that the School Committee approve Policy Number 104-R, Non-Discrimination and Harassment as Presented.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, any discussion? Oh, Tom, sorry.
No problem. Suzie, if I may, what is the, is there anything that has changed in effect, other than the separation, which I think is a wonderful idea, makes sense, but is there anything that has dramatically, or even in a minor strokes, changed with regard to the district's non-discrimination and harassment policies?
So, yeah, I think yes, I think that there's more clarity in the language. I also think that the associated parts to report both bullying and harassment are kind of broken out and are a little bit more clear, not only for forms that can be used or accessed digitally, but can be accessed in paper form, but also forms that can be used by the administration at the school level as well. So there's kind of several parts to each of these, and so, you know, I think the Policy and Communications Subcommittee has done a lot of work in regard to the grainy details, and we've also learned a lot in regard to, you know, how to maintain a policy while also creating a parallel procedure and making sure that they both jive. I think that, you know, we've learned a lot from kind of the past work that's happened here, but also from council as well. So I think that, I think that they're better documents, I think that they're more clear, and I think that the forms are more accessible.
I think that is wonderful. I do recall earlier in the year, I was talking about really that being one, you know, one of many holes, being able to separate policy from practice, or policy from procedure, and it's not just a form, a form necessarily isn't the policy. So I think, in succeeding with that regard, let me just add my two cents to thank the Policy Subcommittee. I know this is not an easy task, it's time-consuming, it's thoughtful, requires a lot of work, and when, but when we have better, clearer, better-defined policies, it serves us all in the end. So thank you for everything you guys did on that.
So I think I would also add, one of the questions I'm sure that will be asked is, how soon will these be online and accessible? And so, the online piece is the delta, because we are in the process of completing the build of our new school website. And so, then we need to import documents in the correct formats and develop forms so that they can be accessed like they're currently being accessed. So in just talking to the Policy and Communications Subcommittee, you know, I think it was safe to say that that would be about, it would be 60 days from probably this evening, and that would give us a window of time to both get the website up and running and work any technical glitches out, but also develop and format the new policies as well as the forms to kind of import those into the new policy book on the website.
Or that, once the vote is taken, it is our policy.
Okay.
It's in effect, as far as I. Motion's- Motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor?
And the last one, move that the school committee approve policy number 100-R, bullying prevention as presented.
Second. Motion's made and seconded. Any additional comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Wonderful.
Chris, before you move on, just another quick update on that, on our committee, subcommittee. We met tonight prior to this meeting, and our next thing that we're tackling is the acceptable use policy for technology, which is a long, detailed policy that is really hard to consume, and we've kind of, we were trying to do too many things at once, but we had looked at that a while back and, and really feel like we need to make that more accessible, particularly for kids in elementary school to be able to read and understand what they, what we're asking them to do when it comes to technology and what is acceptable use. And so tonight, we spent some time looking at some examples at other school districts who have seemingly done this very well. And so we're making some progress on, on that one. I'm not making any promises as to when we'll be bringing that forward, but we are meeting again two weeks from tonight, and we'll be kind of revisiting that work.
Are you involving Jeff in this process?
Jeff?
Minor.
In regard to the new...
Technology acceptable use?
Ah, yes, he will be. He's, he's working on a new tech plan. But we'll, we're going to refine this similar to some of the other documents that we've had. So I think the policy is going to be shorter, and there's going to be an acceptable use guideline that the policy is going to make reference to.
Good.
Which will allow us to kind of, we're also, I believe, going to try to develop some age-appropriate guidelines, which, which really, we're, we're not quite where we want to be with the current acceptable use policy.
Well, I would think even those rules would change to a certain extent when, you know, some of the, you know, the younger students, you know, the Chromebooks, for instance, stay in the classroom, and then the older ones, they were, they were not, they were traveling, so the rules change right there. Okay. So we'll hear from you soon.
Yeah.
Okay. Feature dates, the next school committee will be Tuesday, January 28, 7:30, here at Any comments from the committee? Start with you, Tom.
No.
Colleen?
No comments.
Tom?
No, thank you.
No comment.
I have a quick one. As a liaison to the Sustainable Wakefield Committee, we've had some ongoing meetings going on with facilities and food services about recycling and composting in the schools. And after the school, the holiday break, using the WEF grants that were awarded to the elementary schools, we have started composting and doing food rescue in a pretty meaningful way, as well as recycling. And so the WEF grant covers, the, my understanding is that it covers the composting and the food rescue. And when I say food rescue, what's happening there is kids that don't open the package of raisins because they don't like raisins on their lunch, instead of throwing them into the trash, they're going into a different bin that are being picked up weekly at each of the schools and going to a local food pantry. And so that work has started in earnest, in the, not just started, it's been going in the elementary schools, which is really exciting. We're unable to do that at the Galvin and the high school at this point, because there's no money kind of to spend on kind of paying for the composting, or the, you need refrigerators and freezers for the, for the food rescue. This group's hope is that we can kind of see that expanded. But we're, I think there's really good work going on and partnership happening between Sustainable Wakefield and the school district on trying to figure out, how do we expand kind of recycling at all of the schools? Because it is kind of happening differently at different schools for different reasons. And then how do we take a step kind of even beyond that into kind of composting and this food rescue? So there's exciting stuff going on. Bob, who stepped away, is highly involved in that process, and so it's all good stuff.
Great, thank you.
No comment.
Okay. Only things I have is just a reminder that next Monday is Martin Luther King Day. Human Rights Commission has a great program going to happen at the Galvin School. It's usually a very well-attended and meaningful program.
Chris, do you happen to know what time?
I knew you were going to ask me that. I want to say 10.
It's early, okay.
Yeah, it's, I think it's 10 o'clock, but I could be wrong.
They're having a drive as well, just as an alert, they're, they're collecting...
Food drive?
No, it's not a food drive, yeah. It's, it's more materials, you know, scarves and mittens, you know, sort of cold-weather gear, but also toiletries, so...
I did not realize that, thank you. And also, just something to keep in the back of your mind, coming up in the, I'm thinking in March, we will, we're going to be needing to appoint somebody to the Human Rights Commission. That'll be up on our calendar. I've been speaking with Richard Greif, and March is when we, we need to take that vote, so that'll be coming up. Motion for executive session, please.
Okay. Move that the school committee enter into executive session, the purpose of which is to provide an update on contract negotiations with WEA Unit A teachers, and will adjourn immediately after executive session and will not reconvene and open session.
Second. Is there a roll call vote?
Mr. Markham?
Yes.
Ms. Boyer?
Yes.
Ms. Behar?
Yes.
Ms. Chrisow?
Yes.
Ms. Callanan?
Yes.
Ms. Guida?
Yes.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
So we are in executive session, and we will adjourn directly from there. Thank you.